Everybody ready?
Yep.
All right. We're calling this meeting to order. Pardon. This is a city council regular meeting. We're in the Mon County Commissioned Chambers, 243 High Street. It's Tuesday, August 29th, 2023. It's 7:00 PM. And we're calling this meeting to order and asking the clerk if she would please call the rule.
Yes.
Mayor Bougonham.
President.
Bill Kueckie.
Here.
Wheezy Michael.
Here.
Danielle Trumbull.
Here.
Dave Harshbarger.
Here.
Brian Butcher.
Here.
Mayor Celine.
Here.
Now, we're going to stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we're on to approval of minutes. There's two sets of minutes this evening. August 15th, 2023, special meeting minutes. August 15th, 2023, regular meeting minutes. Approved by acclamation. Everybody, yes? Now, we have correspondence. And if this looks a little bit like a committee of the whole meeting, it's because this month we have like a abbreviated, a little bit of an abbreviated schedule. So, this is kind of like a mini committee of the whole meeting. And we're starting off with a report and plans for 2023 for the Morgantown Urban Deer Archery Hunt, recap 2022, and plans for 2023. And I have Rick Bebop. Is there another representative here? Otherwise, we will pass over that item. And if he comes in or if he wants to come the next meeting, we can always present that then. Item B, Fairmont-Morgantown Housing Authority Annual Report. Crystal Crusoe, Executive Director.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Mayor Celine. Can members of the city council, does that mean I get an extra 10 minutes since I'm now first on the agenda? Thank you for allowing me to come here. I'm here, I'm Crystal Crusoe. I'm the Executive Director of the Fairmont-Morgantown Housing Authority. And I'm here to give you our annual report. You know, I want to remind you that we're a regional housing authority. That means we cover a region. So, we cover Marion, Mon, Preston, and Taylor Counties, as well as the City of Morgantown and the City of Fairmont. We emerged several years ago. After COVID, our agency has taken a pause from our construction and development activities to kind of focus on some of the higher need rental issues and housing stability issues that kind of came after, during COVID and post-COVID. Most people are, know us for our Section 8 program. That's where we provide housing vouchers to low-income families for rental assistance. We have 1,313 vouchers right now. So, that's a pretty substantial amount. We're spending $728,000 a month in rental payments. I was checking my notes. The last time I was here, we were spending $500,000 a month. So, just to give you an example, that's how much we've increased our rents. This year, we hit a leasing limitation. So, HUD gives us an allowance of what we're allowed to spend. We hit our leasing limitation early this year. It was the first week of May, which was really hard for a housing authority to think, gosh, it's only May, and we're already out of vouchers. So, we're, right now, we're in a holding pattern, except for what we call our special purpose vouchers. So, we have our regular vouchers. Those are like, almost like a vanilla kind of voucher. But we have special purpose vouchers, which serve a special population. So, veterans is one population. We do the FYI. It's called Fostering Youth Initiative. That's for foster children that are leaving the state's foster care program and moving into independence. We have a special program for those folks. We also do mainstream program. That's a special voucher that's allowed for non-elderly disabled folks. And new to us is the emergency housing voucher program. And I have some really exciting news to kind of talk to you about with that program. We were awarded 105 emergency voucher, emergency housing vouchers. And I remember, Bill, we talked about this the last time that I was here. It was something very brand, brand new to HUD. And it was to help with folks that were homeless. And we talked about how we were going to use this multidisciplinary approach to kind of provide services to those folks. We were awarded 105 vouchers. Cumulatively, cumulatively, we've served 109. But today, there's 88 in a stable placement. So, we have one more month to exhaust the rest of those vouchers. And whatever we have at the end of the month, the end of month of September, we get to keep those vouchers for 10 years. So, for, for housing authority who doesn't, for, for housing authorities, we're not getting new vouchers regularly. So, for us to have potential to have 88, possibly 105, for the next 10 years is, is really good news for us and for our community. So, we're really proud of that program. We've partnered with a lot of agencies around town in our communities to have MOUs to kind of make that program strong and successful. I think the last time I was here, I told you all that HUD's not making new vouchers. After 20 years, they did provide new vouchers to PHAs last year. And we were fortunate to get 13, which, not a lot, but we'll take it. It's 13 more than we had the year before. So, they're projected to issue 4,000 nationwide. So, hopefully, we'll be in the running for a few more next year. We also are really fortunate to run a homeownership center. I'm not sure if you all are familiar with that. But we work with families, anything that they're looking to do to purchase a home or to save their home. So, preserve or maintain, purchase or preserve their homeownership. This year, though, we took on a new initiative. We actually took on two new initiatives. We are doing housing stability. And one of the things, we hired a housing navigator. And one of the things that she's been responsible for is establishing landlord base of all of our landlords that are in the area and kind of matching those up with people that are looking for homes. So, imagine, it doesn't have to be someone that's on our program. It can be anybody. It could be someone that moves into the area and says, you know, I don't know anything about the area. Help me find a rental unit. So, we've developed this really creative database where she can actually make a Google document and send it to families that are looking for a rental unit. Kind of matches up their bedroom size, you know, if they can have pets, if they need one floor. So, we're really, really proud of that. She's also providing housing stability services, which is a lot of information referral gathering for folks that might need those type of services. The other thing that we're doing, our second year, I'm really proud to tell you that we were the only agency in West Virginia that was awarded a fair housing education outreach grant. So, this is our second year. And what I think is really important for you all to know is that we're helping to alleviate the barriers that were noted and are impediments to fair housing. So, we are now providing fair housing education and outreach throughout the community. We're providing classes. We're meeting with folks. We're giving all kinds of education. And we're doing the good work for next year for our, for our study. I think that will be helpful for you. We are planning to do some open meetings. And we would invite you all to attend those with us later on this year. New in 2023, just to kind of give you a little people what we're working on. We did get some funding to do a landlord repair program. So, we're, we're looking to enroll that in the next month or so. So, we've got some funds that we're going to be giving to landlords that are working with tenants in our program that may have suffered damages. So, that's something new in our program. And, you know, we're, we've moved into the Morgantown office up here on Spruce Street. So, we're there four days a week. And probably within the next two months, we're going to have a live computer station where folks can come in, fill out applications, use the computer to look for jobs, look for, you know, any kind of services that they might need and not have access to a computer elsewhere. So, we're real proud about that. And we'll be sure to, I'll be sure to send you all a message when it's open and ready. The other thing that we've done this year is we got a full-time FSS person. That's new for us. That's, that's how I started the housing authority 20-plus years ago. We've not had a full-time position for years and years. And that program works to help families become more self-sufficient. The government's words are to be free of welfare. So, that's the program that's kind of helping families to kind of establish either training opportunities or job opportunities where they can get off assistance and move into a more independent position. So, we're, we started some classes there. And we're real happy about the progress that that program is making. I wanted to be sure to tell you that we also, last year, worked on the MRAP program where we, I'm sure you all are familiar with that, where we processed mountain air rental assistance for folks that were having trouble with their rent. This year, they've kind of refocused some of that money. And they're using it for critical home repairs. So, I want to be sure that you all know about that. I think I sent Mayor Celine a flyer. But I want to make sure that people in the northern part of the state know about that program. So, they're giving $10,000 grants to homeowners for critical home repair. So, be sure to tell your constituents about that, so they don't miss that golden opportunity. I want to be sure to thank the many people in the city that we work with. I talk to Ricky often and, and also to Emily. We work closely with your code enforcement. So, I want to be sure to give proper thanks to them and working with us. I also want to acknowledge my commissioners that are in the room with me tonight, Brian McAllister and Ron Delaney. And thank them for their, their guidance and their governance and their oversight of our programs. Real happy to have strong leadership behind me for that. In closing, I just want to remind you of our motto. This is our tagline. We say it every day. It's helping you home. And that's just something that we believe to our core, that home is, is a verb and a noun and all of those good things. And it's just something that we live by every day. Do you all have any questions for me? All right. Thank you.
We're, we're slow to wind up, but we'll wind up with questions.
I said we were going to try to wait for, okay. Sorry. So, you said you have 88 EHPs signed up right now. So, do you have availability on this?
Yes.
Okay.
And we have till September the 30th to get those exhausted. So, we've pulled in another group of folks and are trying to expedite those.
Okay. So, people can still apply, is?
Well, those people came off the waiting list.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
So, we have to exhaust a waiting list first.
Okay. All right. Well, okay.
Do you, do you still have, to follow up on that one particular question, then, do you still have people on your waiting list?
For EHP, we do.
Yeah.
But the good news is we do have mainstream vouchers. So, that's non-elderly disabled. And of course, they can get on, they can get on the mainstream wait, the waiting list for that program. So, we, we aren't on a leasing limitation with that program. So, if you hear about someone that's got a voucher recently, it's not a vanilla voucher. It's not the regular housing voucher. It's a special purpose voucher.
For the home repair grant applications, when are those due? When does that end?
That program is open right now.
Yeah.
And it's through the Housing Development Fund. And it's just, when it's gone, it's gone.
Oh, okay.
But I, I'm always anxious to get the money up to the northern part of our, you know, north central part of our state, because it feels like the folks in the South always kind of get a jump on us. So, we're not processing those applications like we did with MRAP. But we are helping families fill out applications. And we're submitting them on their behalf. So, if you know of someone, please, you know, as soon as we found out about it, we put some flyers together and started just putting them out so that people could take advantage. There's not a whole, whole lot of home repair money. And this is a grant, so you don't have to pay it back. It's really nice.
Thank you.
What are the requirements for that?
So, again, we don't process the loan. And the income limits are higher than they typically are. So, they have a chart on their website. And I can forward that to you if you would like. You have to have suffered some kind of impact from COVID. But they're telling us that if you lived through COVID, you suffered an impact through COVID. So, I think that it's, they're looking at critical repairs. They're not doing things to make your house pretty. They're doing things like roofs and, you know, ramps and things that you need to, to maintain your home.
Nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, a couple of questions. I'm a little fuzzy on the idea of the 88 to travel again for a period of 10 years. Can you enlarge on that a bit?
So, when we got the special vouchers, they usually, this program was set to what's called sunset, which means they would, they have a term and they expire. But after we got into the program, they made an announcement that as of the expiration date, the sunset date, anyone that is leased up in housing at that time, they can keep that voucher for 10 years. Now, we don't get to keep that voucher. It doesn't, if that person leaves.
You can't recycle it.
It doesn't recycle. But if that person stays in stable housing, it's all about providing stable housing. Then they can keep it for 10 years. But for us, that's a win, because that's 88 more vouchers, or hopefully 105, that we wouldn't have had otherwise. So, we're excited about it. And, you know, these are the hardest families to house. You know, they're, they're homeless. They, they've come from a homeless environment. So, they've been, it's been a very difficult clientele.
So, it's targeted to that specific group?
Yes. Someone that's, needs emergency housing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then the, the other thing I would ask you, I was surprised to hear, how many counties? How thinly spread are you? And how is, how is that distributed?
So, in our, in our four counties for our Section 8, that's our Section 8, well, that's the whole program. Our Section 8 department has seven inspectors, clerks. So, we have seven folks that handle that 1,313 number that I mentioned. So, that's, that's a lot. They carry a case slate of about 240 people. And then our homeownership center, they cover that, that same area. And they actually pick up Wetzel and Harrison for that, for that particular program. So, we're, we're small but mighty. And then we have a public housing department in Fairmont. So, we manage about 136 apartments there. That makes up some of our staff as well.
We've seen some of your facilities. You do quite well.
Thank you. Well, again, thank you for having me. Feel free to reach out if you have any questions. And I'll be in touch.
Does anyone else have? You all good?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
We will have a public portion. And then for the public portion, anyone may speak and ask questions.
I just have a question. Can I ask a question?
Well. Do we want to suspend the rules?
It's an idea, actually. It's a helpful idea.
No.
It's better than going into the newspaper and putting it all in the newspaper, getting asked, they got to get on the news.
Sir, I think what the mayor is trying to say is that there is a public portion. And we would be happy to hear whatever you have to say. But it should be during the public portion, just because of the limitations of the way our protocol is.
Just how the meeting works.
So, we'd be happy to hear you then. Thank you.
It's.
Right after our unfinished business of boards and commissions. So, we'll have these presentations and then appointments to boards and commissions and then your public portion.
It's item eight on the agenda.
There's, should be agendas back there.
There ain't no sense in me sitting there wet if I can't speak and you can't hear what I have to say. So, I'll be back. You'll see it in the paper. I mean, why would you hire a city manager that couldn't take care of courts for, for Morgantown? There's all kinds of new people. You always have.
Yeah. So, point of order, we're not, we're not having discussion in the back of the room. Pardon. Okay. Anything else?
Thank you, Crystal.
Thank you.
It is hard when someone wants to speak and it's not the right moment. All right. Now, we are on to item C, Community Coalition for Social Justice, Mike Latfield. Nice to see you.
Thank you. Anybody thinks I speak with a funny accent? Yes, I do. Came here in 1977 to work on the, on the research into coal miners' lung diseases. And we've stayed since. Is it this top one forwarding? Can you see it? Oh, it's this one? Okay. I am with the Community Coalition for Social Justice. And I want to thank the council for everything they've done to help us over many years we've been in existence. We were, just going to talk about 10 minutes. Is that okay?
Of course.
Okay. We were organized in 1999 after a call to respond proactively to some Ku Klux Klan activity that was happening nearby, some cross burning at people's houses, I believe. And so, we got together. That's some of us at that time. I'm there. Nice diverse group. And Emily Spielert was one of the people who really got us going. She doesn't live here anymore. Our mission is to bring together people from throughout Morgantown and nearby areas dedicated to promoting principles of social, environmental, and economic justice. Initially, some of the things we've done, initially, we lobbied, this is really all about things we've done. Initially, we lobbied on behalf of the Civil Rights Team Project as a program of the Civil Rights Division of the West Virginia Attorney General's Office to address bullying and discrimination in schools. I'm sorry, I have to look at what I'm reading. Then CCSJ members actually worked revising the city of Morgantown's ordinance to establish a human rights commission in 2001. Almost over 20 years ago now. Since then, we've supported the commission's work to make Morgantown a more inclusive city by endorsing their resolutions on marriage equality, the rights of immigrants, refugees, and asylees. Non-discrimination, non-discrimination in housing and employment, and the importance of welcoming everyone to the Morgantown area. We have publicly, publicly supported the Morgantown City Council's resolutions on land management acknowledgement, International People's Day, the Crown non-discrimination efforts, as well as the council's efforts to establish the civilian police and advisory board. In 2003, we testified at the public hearing that the West Virginia Advisory Committee to the U.S. Commission on Civil Rights held at the College of Law here. Now, our big one really has been the Martin Luther King Jr. Day Celebration Events. And we started that in 2007. Mostly, these were at the Metropolitan Theater in Morgantown. They, they were intended to be family-friendly. In other ways, we wanted children there. So, we really tried hard on that. And we succeeded largely. Some pictures. We had different themes. It's a new day in 2009. Barack Obama came. Peace. You might know some of those people in that picture there. You see the children performing on the stage. And it was great, because we, we tended to fill up the Met in those days. A lot of children there, hand in hand, together we can. That's me as Lincoln. Al Anderson has often, every time, I think, has performed for us with his group. This was around the world session in 2016. And one thing we did, we actually got money for the council for this. We got money to buy books for the Morgantown City Council, the public, sorry, public library. And these focused on disabilities, economic justice, the environment, women's studies, African-American studies, diversity, tolerance, and justice. There's a few of them there. There's some of our group again, me again. And then with a grant from the Appalachian Community Fund, we purchased similar books for the Clay Patel and Clinton District Libraries. We have organized a whole bunch of events. There was an Economic and Social Justice Fair in 2004 at the First Presbyterian Church. Forums on the Regional Jail in 2001, '02, and '09. There was a lot of concern about that. And we helped sponsor a fair housing forum, a program focused on people with disabilities. We had, we had celebration of two local women who have been active in civil rights, Charlie Marshall and Faith Halsad, if I said the name right. We had a religious diversity forum at the Greater St. Paul AME Church in Morgantown in 2014. And last year, we had a social environmental justice fair down by the river. And we're having one this year. And thank you for the money to help do that. We have tables from all sorts of people. We've done some things with arts. We held a program with Al Anderson again, Sunday afternoon with Al, a program in song and story about growing up in Scotts Run. We've had art exhibits at the Mon Arts Building. Art created by local students. And we had a Lady Justice scarecrow from the Botanic Gardens. We work with other groups. We supported Designing Across Divides Conference in 2019 at WVU. Participated regularly in the Morgantown Pride Block Party, supported that. Participated in the I Belong event at WVU. And we continue to publicize the work of the Greater Morgantown Interfaith Association, the NAACP, Native American Studies, LGBTQ+ Center, Dismantling Racism, PFLAG, and other groups devoted to social causes. With the local NAACP group, we continue to publicize and support the work of the League of Women Voters in organizing, running those nights when they have the candidates up talking. And if you have nothing else, the monthly newsletter is a good thing, because it, our person that does that is Barb Howe. And she collects information from all. and she collects information from all the social and action groups. So we know exactly what's going on for the next month in each of those groups and it's all in the newsletter. We have a Facebook page as well and a website. We appreciate the funding you've given us. And we also, First Energy Foundation has given us money too. We received some honors, one from the League of Women Voters, the first one, and then one from the Human Rights Commission in 2017. And then we hope through our actions and the support of many of the people in the community that we can, will continue to address issues of social justice to keep Morgantown a welcoming, open, inclusive community dedicated to treating one another with civility and respect. That's it.
Do you want to publicize your upcoming event?
The fair?
Yeah.
How to publicize it? Sorry?
Do you want to tell this particular group?
Oh.
When your event is?
Yeah, September the 17th is a Sunday. And it's down at the riverfront again from 2:00 to 4:00. And we got a bunch of people coming. And this year, we got some extra stuff. It's actually part of WVU's Diversity Week, so it is one of the places that students can get credit to, credit for going to it. And we're having some music this time. I think Donna Weems is going to play and also there's a drum band as well. The musical drums. Yeah, they're gonna be playing.
Always, always good to get your event out.
It's gonna be in the paper and it's on the website.
Oh, sure. Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions? Appreciate your committed and longstanding involvement in the community.
Well, we thank you for supporting us, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Help me get rid of this.
Presentation of an ordinance amending Articles 523 entitled litter, 1139 entitled solid waste collection, and 1145 entitled weeds and noxious materials. Director of Developmental Services, Ricky Agar.
Evening, Mayor, members of council, city manager Haas. The proposed ordinance before you amend the articles just referenced regarding litter, solid waste, and weeds and noxious materials. In doing so, it makes them more consistent, provide clarity, and help our team enforce these codes. More specifically, the ordinance updates the litter regulations in 523 to clarify and define littering in public spaces and the authority of code enforcement officers to issue citations for littering. It also makes it clear that littering includes leaving litter outside of public waste containers, putting improper materials in them, and improving the use and improperly using or storing private waste containers in public spaces. It also makes clear that in addition to gutters, litter may not be swept into sidewalks from private property and that private property owners are responsible to keep the sidewalk and other public's rights away free of litter. The proposed revision also specifies who may be trained and serve as litter prevention officers. This includes all of the team on the Code Enforcement Division, the Parking Authority Officers, Fire Marshal and Deputy Fire Marshals, and the Development Services Director. Additional updates define person and premise in Article 1139 of the city's code regarding solid waste. So it's consistent with those same definitions in the litter ordinance, Article 523. And the police department has also requested that medical waste and infectious medical waste be defined and included as littering. And in doing so, the police department also requested adding an additional penalty for this type of violation, including optional term of imprisonment. Section 113904 would also specify that depositing construction waste in public waste containers is prohibited. Article 1147 is updated to specifically include litter so that dirt, rubbish, debris, brush, poison ivy, trees, plant growth, filth, and other deleterious material from property within the city and allows the designee of the city manager to serve notice to remove said materials. I'd like to thank our CBO Drew Cantus for bringing this to our attention and for our city attorney for compiling the amendments you have before you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. City Council, do we have questions?
Just, just a general question, Ricky, in terms of just the...
Sorry. Just when you think, just when you think he gets to sit down for a second.
Just curious, you know, how, how big of a problem has this been that these changes will address for code?
I think it's, it sets expectations, right? So that there would be a challenge to the code, for instance, the storage of construction materials in public waste containers. I mean, those definitions occurred and were in certain parts of the code, but this brings the litter ordinance as well as the solid waste collection ordinance in to make them more parallel and consistent with each other.
Yeah. These seem like very commonsensical, useful items that can be used pretty much as soon as it's been adopted.
Absolutely.
Ricky, can you talk about the storage of the, of the trash cans in the public rights of why? I know that that's something that you just mentioned. That's something that I've received a lot of complaints about because Willie Street is in my war. And I forwarded to you and the city manager complains about that because it becomes a safety issue. I mean, I myself have nearly ran someone over who was walking into Willie Street because there were trash cans blocking the sidewalk completely. Do we have a plan? I know that a lot of those people say, well, there's nowhere else to put them. Do we have a plan for how to address that when that's the, the claim?
We're discussing that internally and we understand the issues and there, you know, there's two types of approaches, right? We could take a hard standard approach and say, well, it doesn't really matter. You need to get them off of the, off the sidewalks. But in practi, you know, in practical terms, that's especially when we're dealing with the topogate we have in the area that you just referenced, it's difficult. So what our team is trying to do is kind of come up with a hybrid approach of what we might be able to do to provide areas where they could be safely stored that's not on the sidewalk or find a way to disguise them or limit their, limits what's happening right now.
Great. I'll follow up when you...
Absolutely. Plan's not ready yet, but we have been discussing it several times internally with the team.
Good. Super appreciate that.
Yeah.
We get, for years, we've gotten complaints and they'll be sort of the fall crackdown and someone will come and try to either provide citations or talk to people or some combination up and down Willie Street and doesn't seem to make...
Doesn't make the difference.
Much difference. And also some of those retaining walls are falling down. I don't know what that falls under, but it's just the combination of trash receptacles in the street and then some of the retaining walls coming. It just is a whole look that's not really helpful for the city.
I agree. We are trying to address that, especially where there's opportunities for people to store their toters outside of the public right of way. We do need to enforce that better because there, there are some instances where it can be and it's just for whatever reason, it's not happening. But on Willie Street, for instance, there is more of a topographical challenge there with some of those properties.
But it's really a safety issue.
Yep.
It's, it's a tight sidewalk and a tight street to begin with, so when people have to step into the street and you come around a blind turn.
Right.
Sometimes you take your life into your own hands walking along Willie Street.
Maybe we need smaller containers, like two smaller containers instead of one large one? There's gotta be some, for some of that, there's gotta be some solution.
Well, and depending on how much work DOH does along Willie, if they're doing some shoulder and sidewalk work, maybe it'll get a, I don't know. We'll see.
Sometimes they take up sidewalk when they do roadwork.
It'll either get better or worse.
We'll go for the better. We're gonna try for the better.
You're covering all your pieces. Does anyone else have any questions? Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, one last one. With regards to the, the truckloads causing litter, truckloads causing litter, does that also address heavy trucks carrying limestone coal that lose the top half of their load on the Route 7 turns?
I don't believe so, but I would defer to our city attorney to maybe address that a little bit further.
For the question, so that's section 523.07 of the article, which is not amended in this ordinance. It does, it prohibits anyone from dumping litter on the public right of way from the truck. I think it would apply to any truck that spills gravel or other materials on the roadway and that they could be cited under that provision.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Did you make a change or add to the storage of dumpsters in this? Change here in the...
Counselor, these, these ordinances don't make any changes?
Just to the requirements for storage of private waste containers, whether toters or dumpsters, those, those storage requirements are contained in part in Articles 523 and 1139 as well as the building code. But there are no, there are no changes to them here.
Because I was looking through the 1139 about the dumpsters being kept in, what's the wording it uses? Dumpster within secure enclosures through the building codes, I wasn't sure.
That's correct. Our codes do require dumpsters to be kept in enclosures as well as the waste receptacles not to be stored in front of houses.
Is that something that we enforce right now?
I'd be happy to check in with the city manager's office, Development Services, and Police Department and see if we can get you a, a more comprehensive response to that than I could, than I could offer.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Just a comment on that, some property owners take that very seriously and have provided enclosures and...
I was more so thinking of like the dumpsters and stuff like that in the downtown area in terms of providing enclosures to keep trash from getting everywhere. So I was just curious about that.
And perhaps locking some of them?
We'll provide an answer, welcome with Ryan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ricky.
Move to an agenda? Is that what we're being asked to do? Put this on a future agenda?
Second?
Absolutely. Does it just come to us or does it go back to somewhere else?
Oh, no, Mayor, this is, this is ready for council action. If, if you all would agree to move the ordinance to a future agenda by acclamation, that would be great.
Great. And I think we have a motion right here?
We don't generally do motions or anything, right? Just kind of like, yeah, let's do that.
That's correct.
To place this on a future agenda, just council's dissent would be...
All right. Let's do that. Let's move it to a future agenda. Yes, yes, okay.
Yep.
All right. Presentation of an ordinance amending section 155.05 of the city code providing for furnishing of bond by members of the Parking Authority, Parking Authority Director Dana McKenzie.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors, and city manager. I have been working and I want to thank Christine for bringing some of the ordinances that we currently have that are kind of dated. We're working to try to bring those up to date and I want to thank Ryan as well for, for helping out with this. And although this is specifically tonight talking about 155.05, there's gonna be more to come, just so you're aware. So anyway, what we're looking to do is amend the ordinance that requires the Parking Authority Board members to require a $5,000 bond. Now, this was a ordinance that goes clear back into the 60s, I do believe, 1967. During that time period, I'm assuming, I wasn't around then, but that money was being handled possibly by the board members or folks that did have interactions on a regular basis with the funds from the Parking Authority. Currently, our board members do not, are not associated with any of the funds. They sit more as a, a board to help with the ordinances and the procedures and policies of the Parking Authority. So what we are looking to do today or to ask is to repeal section 155 requiring the $5,000 bond for the board members. Simple.
Does anyone have any questions? Seems commonsensical.
Is this something that was just brought to your attention? Do the board members currently have bonds or was, like, that's something that I had never heard of before that this came out? So it's not currently happening and this was just kind of one of those weird old things on the books that...
Right. Yeah, we're just trying to get, get them cleaned up and see if folks do look into them and have questions.
I feel like when we're interviewing Parking Authority members, if we told them, you're required to carry your own bond, like, but nobody else...
Well, the way the, if I understand it correctly, and Ryan can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that the Parking Authority actually puts up the monies for the bond, so you wouldn't technically have to do that. Although if Brian wanted to pass $5,000 along, that would be great.
So currently, we are putting up the money?
It's, it's not. That's the way the ordinance is written.
I see.
That we would, yes.
So this is strictly housekeeping?
Correct.
I don't think it's happened in recent memory. I don't think there's been that, yeah. I'm with Bill. Move it along. Move it along. All right. Move it to the next feasible agenda.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Look forward to other housekeeping matters.
Yes, they're coming.
All right. I don't believe we have any boards and commission appointments. And then we're on to the public portion. This is the public portion which shall be subject to rules established by council and adopted by resolution. So we're gonna open... The empty silence. Okay. We're gonna open the public portion.
Muffle that.
Yes. Yeah, just...
I do live in the city, can I talk?
Sure. Whether you live in the city or not, you can talk.
Okay. I just want to support the view about Willie Street because I think it is a sad thing. When you're coming to this town, you come down that street and there's often broken glass on the road, garbage cans, and it's filthy. If you could do something about it, you'd really improve the city, I think. End of story.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there another? Come on up. Joan Gibson, take the microphone.
Pardon?
Hello?
I am the owner of the old Coontz Farm at the end of Coontz Avenue, which is, was bought by my parents in 1937 and they moved there with my two older brothers. I wasn't born yet. This has been my home. I inherited it from my parents' estate in 2004 and thus became the second Gibson owner of the property. In 1994, when I was caring for my mother, Mr. Bernie Bossio built a new house and he opened a lane across there. And when I confronted him, he said it was only to move in materials and equipment and as soon, and he had his people parked in my field, the North Field. It would be closed. It was never closed. And our family has been protesting it on and off since 1994. I have spoken, as did my brother, who, my living brother, who just turned 90 earlier this month. We spoke with Mr. Boroff by phone separately, and that was a circular event. I arranged a meeting with Mr. McCorskey and Mr. Brake, and that went no better. I made a proposal and I was basically listened to and then laughed, laughed at later. It has been a problem. I have had, I have had neighbors yelling at me. Now, I live in the middle. I only see them when I mow. So that's not a big problem, except I've had them screaming at me that I'm not maintaining my property to their standards. One even said, why do you want my little sports car to get ruined on this street? Well, it's not a street, it's a series of private driveways. And the house that Mr. Bossio built was then landlocked, which I believe is illegal. And we've been dealing with this ever since. Mr. Brake told me that if I would give the neighbors what they wanted, they'd be nice to me, I'm sure. So now I'm here and it will come up later. And I am losing... and I am losing probably fifteen feet of my property for about five hundred and forty-seven feet. Not a small amount when you consider the value of that property. But I would like to say that the city of Morgantown has, until I met Mr. Hawes, has been no help. All you do is send out people to tell me what I must do. And yet our property, purchased in nineteen thirty-seven, I'm very sure is under very... We weren't even in the city till nineteen sixty-five. We're under, I'm not sure what code, but a very old code that does not limit me in much of any way, because I'm grandfathered in. So this has been an unfortunate experience, dealing with this since nineteen ninety-four. And I would say to the neighbors who probably will want to be smug now, I will decide how the property is sold. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? We're gonna close this public portion. We have two items on the consent agenda. The first item is consideration of approval of an agreement with Monongalia County Board of Education, providing a prevention resource officer at Suncrest Middle School. The second item is consideration of approval of an agreement with Monongalia County Board of Education, providing a school resource officer at Morgantown High School. As you all know, the consent agenda, we vote up or down on, unless someone wishes to take a particular item off for discussion. So if, just waiting one second.
The consent agenda is presented?
There we go.
Second.
Thank you. And then if the clerk would please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Abugonam?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes. Passes unanimously. We're now under new business. Item A, consideration of approval of an ordinance authorizing the agreement regarding Cypress Street and providing for an establishment of Cypress Street in the city's street system. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. You received a good historical perspective from Joan, and really have appreciated her sitting down at the table and, and working with us. This is kind of a unique, well, it's, it's not unique to areas that are growing. You have a really beautiful agricultural, it started out as an agricultural piece of property. I think it's five point three acres or thereabouts, and, and it's, it's a beautiful piece of property. And certainly, the property owner has, sees great value in maintaining that. However, over time, around that property, the area's developed into some really nice residential areas. And over time, what started out as kind of a driveway, it, it kind of evolved and became kind of used by all of the, the neighbors. And over time, the city has contributed in, in at least maintaining some order in the street in the form of filling park holes and putting gravel down and other things. We felt like it was at a time, it would reach a point here where we needed to try to work out an agreement whereby all the property owners might be, be benefited, that we take into account some of the concerns. And I think we, there were some concerns that Joan had brought to my attention, and those were included in this agreement that you got to receive a copy of. I think they're, they're reasonable. And I, I think this is a, a great example of just kind of sitting down and seeing what we can do together and make things work. And, and so it's my recommendation that this, this agreement be approved so that we can go ahead and, this, this road, by the way, Cypress Street, is on the city's... I think you told me they started it today. Started some of the activity on it today. So it's, it's my recommendation that the council approve this, this agreement.
Does anyone have questions?
This is the one in the third ward?
Seventh.
No, seventh ward, seventh ward, yeah. Does anyone have any questions?
Do you want a motion first, or question?
Uh, motions would be better.
Move to approve?
Second.
Thank you. So, does anyone have any...
So this road will be blocked from vehicular traffic?
Well, no. It's through traffic.
Through traffic.
Yeah, that was the, the agreement, that it's not a, the, the concern was that it would be made a thoroughfare for all, for the entire area. And, and the key is, the cities agreed that we would restrict it to, from, to, from, through, through traffic and vehicular traffic. And so that was, that was in agreement, so we're, we're ready to move forward with that.
So local traffic only?
Yeah, this is a problem I'm aware of that has existed for a period of time, and I'm, it's... I appreciate your, I appreciate your position and understand your, your concern. I'm grateful that you were able to find some sort of satisfactory, or at least some sort of compromise that did not impede on your own particular sense of property. And I'm grateful for that and for the neighborhood. And I'm pleased that our city manager was able to meet your needs and satisfy. I, I, I hope that's so, and if that's so, you certainly, this, this agreement certainly will have my support.
Thank you for your service over the years.
For what?
Your service, your service.
For doing what?
Not, not this. D A R and other, other, other public service, is what I'm talking about. Is there anyone else?
Ms. Gibson, I really appreciate you coming to the table and speaking with our city manager about this and being willing to come to an agreement from our conversations. I know you've had some difficult times with the city in the past, so I really appreciate you being willing to do this for us and for your neighborhood. I just wanted to say thank you.
It's nice to speak with a city manager actually listening.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep, you used to be in the fourth ward, and I know that you had a lot of different situations where it did not come to a good resolution. So glad that that happened this time.
I sort of know what the code says.
Good, good. Call for the question?
Good idea. It's time. If you please call the roll.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Abugonam?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes, passes unanimously. Consideration of approval of an ordinance providing for the establishment of Alley H in the street, in the city's street system. And I think we're going to hear from our assistant city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So included in your packet is an ordinance essentially opening up a right-of-way. So this is an existing right-of-way, what we often refer to as a paper street. That has, it's right-of-way that has been laid out, but never opened as a roadway or anything else. So this actually came through, it came from a walk with Councilor Michael through the neighborhood. And this area was identified as a great opportunity to create or enhance a pedestrian pathway. So this would be opening up what is to be known as Alley H in the block N of the North Morgantown addition. So I think that goes in the way, way back machine of where exactly that is. But it is between Overhill Street and Morgan Street. And we would work with our own public works, folks, to lay either crushed limestone or millings that we have to create a walking path through this area and likely would have bollards on either end of it limiting. So it is solely for pedestrians, cyclists, and other not motorized access. But should we need, just to make sure that there aren't vehicles traveling on it, there would be bollards put on either end. And it is approximately 200 feet in length, and it's a 12-foot wide right-of-way. So obviously, the pathway would not be 12 feet, probably four to six feet wide, so two people could pass, but otherwise, that is what is being proposed for your consideration.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Emily, I just have one question. How are we dealing with the bamboo? Because is that stuff gonna come back?
Yeah. Bamboo is an invasive species here, so it's just gonna be regular maintenance.
So they'll just treat it, right, okay, that's all I need. Because I was saying, but I took a walk through it the other day with some neighbors. And by the way, I'm getting a lot of thank yous for it, except for one, of course.
Always, there's one.
There always has to be one person who doesn't like the bamboo.
But, but yeah, I went with the three of the neighbors, and they did some dog walking. They love it. Because now they don't have to go all the way around the block, and they're older constituents. But they're really enjoying it. But they asked me the same thing. Are we gonna be able to control that bamboo?
Any type of invasives, the best way to combat that is just regular maintenance. So as those folks are using it, if they find that it is in need of some maintenance attention, some cutting back of the bamboo or anything else, they can use the 3-1-1 app or, or go through you and just let us know, and we'll send some folks out to make sure that that is being maintained. Because it will require, even once we put the initial limestone or millings down, it will require, you know, regular maintenance. You know, typically, the millings are fairly hardy, but anything like that is going to require ongoing maintenance.
Do we have a timeline for the milling?
We just started milling roadways this week. And so we are taking some of those to different places, but we would, I think it's anticipated to be done, you know, this calendar year, but typically before a snow flies.
Awesome. Thank you very much. I appreciate all your help on this.
So the neighborhood asked for this, and the immediate neighbors are generally in favor?
Yeah, they were ecstatic, especially the guy that the bamboo is going into his house. So yeah, everybody's pretty excited about it, and I, I had one complaint.
We have opened up these kind of pedestrian access points or have kind of unofficial goat paths, or whatever you want to call them, in, in many of the neighborhoods. And so these are just ones that we're trying to ensure that we have the low-stress pedestrian corridors and those access points, whether it be for just anyone, or seniors, or people walking their dogs that may not like being by cars, or younger children.
It's helped them. They, that's what they, their major thing is, they're older, and they, it's, they don't have to walk on the street. But Frank did ask me about a baller on the T side of it. The alleyway connects, I don't, we discussed this.
The alleyway is a T.
Yeah.
So if you put it on either end of the newly opened a bollard, you might want to do one on the end of the T also.
We will make sure any place that a vehicle can get to will not be able to...
They are gonna love you for this, because college kids are parking there, so, hell, like that.
Yeah, because by opening up the top part, it connects then to the part that goes up the middle. So then it's like a system.
Yep, perfect. Absolutely. This is, again, all work that we should be able to do in-house.
Okay.
I would like to suggest that, you know, rather than Alley H, that we call it Wheezy's Alley.
There you go. I like that.
All of our alleyways within the city that are referred to as alleys have a very process of doing that, but city council does have the ability to rename streets anytime they would like.
We're gonna make one street after me. They see me enough walking around, they'll accept.
I move to amend, to name this Wheezy's Alley.
I've gotten a bug bait to prove it.
I mean, I don't know why we wouldn't.
Well, a second.
Thanks, guys.
More creative than...
Alley H is way, it's way better.
How about Wheezy's Way?
That's way better.
Well, I don't know.
We've now amended the amendment. So first, we'll, we'll vote on the amend, the amendment to the amendment.
Wheezy's Way.
Wait, are we actually doing this?
Did we, did we? Are you doing it, or aren't you doing it? Are you serious?
Yes.
All right, well, you're serious, I'm serious. All right, so...
So what are, what are we...
Wheezy's Way.
So Wheezy's Way. So do you want to just, I mean, we need to do, like, she amended your amendment. Do you want to just change your amendment?
Yeah, I would just move to change my amendment to, yeah.
Okay, then do we have a...
Councilwoman.
You made a motion. Do we have a second?
Emily's got an issue over here.
What?
I don't have an issue. I just would say that any kind of actual naming of streets we have, or, or places, we do typically have to check with MECA.
Oh. All right. Is this an ordinance that we'll have a second reading on? We can always amend during second reading.
We do follow the global addressing process, so any... Not to put a thistle on Wheezy's Way, but... We do have to...
I doubt there are any other Wheezy's Way, but if there are, we'll find out.
I would not want to do that and then have to undo that, but we do have a process for naming rights of way to ensure that there are not conflicting
Yeah.
property or conflicting or very similar named places within the county. So this has come up before and other things, and so I am not aware of any, but we would have to probably check with MECA before we can officially do that.
Maybe we could do that between this reading and the next reading? Would that be, or does it need to be a separate matter? I guess this is a legal question.
I'm sure we can check on that with the city's addressing and mapping coordinator, and if there is a conflicting name or other reason that it can't be re-designated, then we can notify council and take care of that at your September nineteenth meeting.
Nice.
Okay.
So you can, if you would like, proceed with your amendment to the, the name of the right-of-way and, and then the...
Then we'll check before we do the final reading?
Yes, we will, we will confirm.
So now we are voting on the amendment. And... To Wheezy's Way. Yes. We may have to work on some spelling.
Yeah.
Okay.
Butcher was the motion. Who said it? Trumbull?
Bill.
Oh, Bill? Okay, sorry.
Although I did say Alley.
You did.
No, it won't increase it, but that's fine.
Okay. So now we would be voting on the amendment. If the clerk would call the roll on the amendment.
Yes. Deputy Mayor Abugonam?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes, passes unanimously. Now we're gonna vote on the main motion. Is there anyone that has anything to say about alley openings?
Call the question.
All right. If you would please call the roll on the main motion.
Yes. Deputy Mayor Abugonam?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes, passes unanimously. Now we're on... I'm gonna find myself a paper street. We should all find one now.
That's funny.
Consideration of approval to amend, that's beginner's, beginner's luck. Consideration of approval... Consideration of approval to amend the 2023 City Council meeting calendar. And this is the city clerk. And we have a current calendar and a proposed calendar. Our clerk is going to explain.
Okay, so if you will look in front of you the.
The current calendar, the first date we'll be looking at is October 31st, and that is committee the whole. And if it is council's wish to move that to October 30th, which makes it a Monday, so that there is no conflict with trick-or-treating. So that's the first date.
Yep, trick-or-treating and neighborhood events.
Yes, yes.
Though we haven't yet set the date for trick-or-treating.
Exactly.
The second and third date are the two November meetings, regular meetings, Wednesday, November 8th and Wednesday, November 22nd. Originally, when this calendar was set up, on the calendar, it said election. So it just, like every election year, it's moved, those two meetings are moved to Wednesday. However, there is not an election this year. So if it's council's wish to move that, those two meetings back to Tuesday, the first one, move that to the 7th, and then the second one, move that to the 21st. And when you move the second one to the 21st, it also helps with the city employees because more than likely, November 22nd will be a city holiday to observe one of the days for Thanksgiving.
And even if not, it would be a time when people would want to be possibly cooking that evening rather than.
So in the packet, you have the, what is proposed?
Yeah, the last, last page of your packet.
So move to approve the three date changes, October 30th, November 7th, November 21st.
Second.
Any comments, questions? Or I think one thing that could be noted is on your next agenda, you can anticipate that we will be looking at October 31st as Halloween, as is traditional, and possible times of 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock, which is what we did last year. That'll come up at your next agenda, in your next meeting. Great. All right. Anybody? All right. Please call the roll.
Yes. Deputy Mayor Abugonam?
Yes.
Bill Kueke? Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumble?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes. Passes unanimously. Onto the city manager's report.
There is a lot going on. The city just had a city department head meeting on Monday, and it was a long one. There's just from paving to just, just things that we're catching up on. I don't have anything specific to catch council up on than what's in the project management tool.
All right. Report from the city clerk?
Yes, mayor. So I did send you all an email today about the upcoming state auditors training in Bridgeport. And so just have a look at that email as it's coming up on Wednesday, September 20th. And there is a deadline to register, and it's September 14th. And some things that they will be talking about, cybersecurity, getting ready for audit, P-cards, and dilapidated structures. So let me know if you all wish to go. Doing my best to get the travel authorizations done before we travel. Next thing is the Fire Civil Service Commission, in collaboration with the Morgantown firefighters, will be holding an open house for their physical agility on September 30th. The commission decided to do was to prepare those potential candidates for this agility test because if you have ever seen it, it is quite challenging. They've opened that up to those folks who have gone onto our website at MorgantownWV.gov. If you do that and type in job interest form, some things will come up and you can select fire and you can fill out this form online. And it automatically comes to the clerk's office. And it's just basically someone saying, hey, I'm interested in becoming a firefighter. And so we have their information. So we went back to the beginning of 2021 because it takes so long to go through an eligible list of firefighters, the potential candidates. We want to make sure that we're reaching everyone. So we sent out an email to about 225 folks who had completed the job interest form. And we've invited them to come to this open house. And it is going to be on a Saturday, September 30th, at 10:30 in the morning. So if there are any folks out there that have not completed that form but is interested in attending, please reach out to the clerk's office or if you want to find that form and complete it. We're hoping for a big response. So we're going to bring some folks in, bring them in at separate times so there's not such a large crowd at the, at the fire station. It's going to be at the North Side Fire Station. And basically, the firefighters will set up the agility course and show the potential candidates how the agility course is run and allow them to ask questions and actually do the test. So we're hoping to have a big response on September 30th. The Police Civil Service Commission will be holding promotional exam on October 4th for one first sergeant and two sergeants. So hopefully, right after that, we'll be giving you a notice of some three folks who are police officers who have been promoted. I've been talking about municipal government week. Thank you for your ideas. And I'm still looking for ideas. I've reached out to Drew, our communications director, to maybe do a municipal government week logo for us. I saw that on another city's site, and I thought it was a pretty cool idea. So anyway, keep in touch. We're going to, we're working on things, see how we can engage our community and our students and help them learn more about the city.
Remind us the dates?
October 16th through 20th. And then lastly, the Police Civil Service Commission will be holding entry-level police officer testing on October 28th. We're still taking applications. And all of that information can be found on our website at MorgantownWV.gov. And if there are any folks who have questions, they can certainly call the clerk's office and we'll be glad to give them the information that they need. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And city attorney?
Thank you, mayor. Council received the presentation of updates to the litter code this evening. One of the things that portion of the city code does is designate our special litter prevention officers who can enforce the litter prohibitions. We regularly do training of the city employees who are designated to those positions because they don't have the ordinary law enforcement training regarding citations and other enforcement measures. So we've scheduled another training session in late September where new fire marshal and new deputy voting officials will attend and go through that training process to be prepared to issue those citations and enforce the code. Mr. McKenzie talked about ongoing work with the parking authority on managing their codes and facilities. We've been working with them on that, and it's always great to work with. I think one of the things they are looking at, along with development services and arts and culture departments, is how food trucks are regulated and permitted in our downtown areas. And so those departments are coordinating to get together to look at changes to those, I think, both ordinances and permitting processes. And hopefully, we'll have something for council to review in that regard soon. This is, I guess, not directly city business, but the Lakeland Hydroelectric Project is undergoing relicensing through Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. The Mon River Trails Conservancy has intervened and filed comments, I believe, regarding the recreation plan. If any council members have interest in that facility and operation or proceeding, I'd be happy to provide updates. This is the Cheat Lake Dam. They have, and in part, and why I believe MRTC is participating, they have, as a part of their license conditions, they provide recreation facilities. And those are, at least in some way, planned for a connection to the Sheepskin Trail that extends from our rail trail system.
I think there's one right by where the dam is to go straight rather than up and over.
Yes. So obviously, not, not within city limits, but something that council may have interest in. So if you do, I'd be happy to update you or field questions about that. And with that, that is all I have to report this evening.
Thank you. I believe we have in the past supported items like that, like at, items up at the overlook to Cooper's Rock. We've written, maybe we didn't pass an ordinance necessarily, but we've definitely written like a letter of support or something because those are definitely areas that our citizens use and our utilities and.
Sure.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Then we'll start with Joe Abugonam. He's our deputy mayor and may have any comments this evening?
For neighborhood updates, or first ward updates. I guess the first thing I did want to do today is give a tree board update. There is a misrepresentation made of the trees on High Street, and I feel the need to correct it. The trees are frontier elms. If you Google that, it is actually the first choice for residential as well as city streets, streetscapes. And when they were planted many moons ago, as I understand, around 2006, the organization that planted them did not bury them enough, which created some other root problems that we were seeing. And I just wanted to take a moment to send my appreciation to all the hard work and expertise that our tree board does have. Because it feels like a lot of times, they only come up when there is some concern. And I'd like to just give them their proper appreciation. And on that note, though, I am happy to report that those trees are much happier with a little more room to grow. I was reached out to and asked when the next first ward meeting is. I guess, as I understand, our website has not been updated to represent the quarter release that they're, we are doing now. So the next first ward meeting is September 25th. And since it is still warm out, we will be meeting at Jack Roberts Park, especially to discuss the upcoming Halloween trick-or-treating. And I am, just want to say I appreciate all the help that Ms. Wade has given me in terms of working together with our upcoming municipal week. And the kids are really looking forward to it, especially in terms of acting as mayor and yelling at, or listening to the public anthem, which was my favorite part. And let's see, the last thing is I got an email today. Next Wednesday, September 6th, is the MMM, 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 MPO, is hosting the West Virginia Vulnerable Road User Assessment and is an open house for people to discuss thoughts and concerns as it relates to the pedestrian safety in and around our community. And that will be in Westover, and I will have that posted on my Facebook for anybody interested in attending.
Date and time again for that?
September 6th. And I forgot to write down the time, but I believe it was, I want to say 6:00.
I have it. It's September 6th from 4:30 to 6:30 at the Mountain Lion Ed Orders.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it up.
I forgot to write down the time, so thank you for having that. That's all I got.
Perfect.
You coming my way?
It's your turn.
Thank you. There's a spin meeting tomorrow, which was postponed from last week. And given the circumstance, without rain, we should be at Eaton Park, which is not really the restaurant, but rather on the corner of. Yes, I know. The corner of Park and Morris Street. There'll be new officer elections, and there'll be some discussion about the block party, which will be coming up. And our block party is scheduled for September 8th. It's a Friday, which would be at the same location. Other than that, I don't think I have anything else that's, that I need to report on. So I'll leave it to the new street owner.
The new street owner. First off, I want to thank Emily and Kim and Rick and them for getting this done. This is, they're really, it took a while, but it's been a lot of years in the making. But I also want to thank you guys for the help with the abandoned house. That's just, it's such a long and tough and legal issue. And I'm really glad that we're going to be able to do something to at least clean the neighborhood up and make it look more appropriate and nice. And I think that's it. And our sign's here in Morgantown and ready to go.
Where's it go?
It'll be up in a couple weeks.
No, no, we're in the.
It's, Public Works has it. Oh, where? Oh, I'm sorry. It's a corner Willie Street.
Where can I go to see it?
Okay. When Public Works gets up, it'll be on, I believe it's corner.
Same place it was before.
Willadel and Afton, I believe, I want to say. Coming up the hill as you're going to the Eureka Cafe.
Cool.
It'll look nice. It's going to be good, so. Yes, well, I said Willie, it's Willadel, so.
Nice. My sign's up on Willie.
You like it. Your sign's Willie, mine's Willie.
Thanks to the assistant city manager and city staff and Jamie Lester. We did get our woodburn sign up. It has been a long 22 months since it disappeared. And last week, they got that installed for us. So everyone make sure you drive by Richwood and Mon Avenue intersections. It's much nicer than our old one. He, he made us a very nice sign with some sculpting and some metalwork. And it's very heavy and very secure, I hope. We'll be doing some landscaping around that. I've already talked to the urban landscape director with the city, and we're, we're working on some landscaping and then hopefully have a ribbon cutting this fall when we do our woodburn neighborhood party. So I will let you all know. I expect Bill to be there with as much crap as he's given me about my sign. I also wanted to point out that the city of Huntington is moving forward on POTA. They have installed their signs, they are getting their permits. They really took advantage of all the hard work that Attorney Simon and I put in. And we're trying to get Morgantown to take advantage of that as well. So hopefully, that will be coming and we'll have that in place by the spring. At this point, I guess, I think fall's out. We were really, really hoping to have some in place for the haunted walks that Main Street does at the end of October. But I don't know, it, it's taking a little bit of time. But hopefully, by this spring, we'll, we'll have our own POTA in place. In the meantime, we all need to go to Huntington and have fun. Support the idea. A couple of fun things that I've done, I guess. I had the opportunity with Councilor Abugonam to attend the Lauren's Wish grand opening over the weekend. They've been open for, for several months, but just had their grand opening. They've been open for, for several months, but just had their grand opening. They have now served two, as of Saturday, they had served 262 clients with a 92% placement rate into longer-term rehabilitation, so they are, they are doing a lot of good work there. If you haven't had a chance to visit that facility, I highly recommend contacting them and scheduling a visit. They're, they're really filling a gap that existed in our community. I also had the opportunity with some city staff and Councilor Kueke to attend a celebration of some firefighters who have celebrated 25 years with the city, Captain Lemley and Lieutenant Jenkins with the Morgantown Fire Department. Last week, we got together with the Fire Civil Service Commission and had some plaques and things. That was a very nice, nice event. I would encourage all of us, as we go into Labor Day weekend, to really reflect on city employees and ensuring that they are shown the appreciation that they deserve, because a lot of people in the city work very hard, especially our civil service employees are working very hard, and a lot of times, that's a thankless job, and it's a difficult job, and I'm not sure that they're getting the, the gratitude that they deserve, especially from, from us in the city sometimes, it seems. The final thing I'd like to mention is that I am still requesting a charter review subcommittee to be formed to explore potential changes to the charter to ensure that it is keeping up with the modernness and the current size of our city, so I'm again requesting that that happen, and I request to be included on that. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
I would like to just note a thanks to Drew Gatlin, and possibly others, but there was some concern in sixth ward of some speeding, and with the Mon County Schools now open, and within 24 hours, we had a radar gun sign and showing what your speed is, and telling you you're going too fast, you're going slow enough, whatever, and that, that was just so responsive and so nice, and the neighbors really appreciated that they were able to act so quickly on that. And the South Hills Block Party, Annual Block Party, is September 10th, and I believe everyone should have received an invitation, but that's from 4:00 to 7:30 on Sunday, September 10th, up the top of Vandelia in South Hills. And then just a quick rail trail update, MRTC, Mon River Trail Conservancy, was awarded a grant through the DOH to repave a section of the trail that will go out to bid on September 12th, and will go from the Arboretum to the end of the pavement in Star City. And it, once it occurs, because it's a DOH project, the potential is that the trail will be shut down through that stretch until it's completed in December. And so there are a few special events that MRTC hopes to work with, the DOH's vendor, on who is doing the paving, so that there's a couple of fun runs and such that can be held. But if you're using that area for recreation or transportation, it's a good chance, if this proceeds with the bid on September 12th, that it could be down for most of the fall. So. But good news is, it's gonna be paved, so that's all I have to-
Pardon, do they have, they do things like that? Do they make an official detour?
When it's a private company, yes, and because it's the DOH overseeing it, it's not guaranteed to happen.
Because there sure are some that would be worthy of note.
We will do our best to ensure that we can do whatever we can to keep it open in some capacity.
Yeah, or have some kind of detour.
Yeah, you're right, right.
Official detour.
Right, right.
To recognize its transportation qualities.
Yep.
I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank all of the WVU faculty and students that have spoken out against the cuts that are looming on the university, and for them organizing an event at 123 and a protest at the university. I hope that the administration can find a better path forward with those people in mind. And that's all I have to report this evening.
Thank you. I guess I wanted to thank Councilor Butcher and Matt Cross, and, gosh, our cook, Chris.
Chris Dale.
Chris Gluck, for an excellent block party. It was to open the fairy garden, which, if you're not familiar with the fairy garden, it has some fairy houses that were made by children in the center, and then people donated plants in a circle around that area, and it's at Turtle Park, which is otherwise known as Suncrest Mini Park, off of Collins Ferry Road. And I got to come to the first 10 minutes, and then had another meeting to attend and vote. And then I came to the last half an hour after everyone had left and had some leftovers and got to talk to Chris and Matt, so, and see the kids that were still playing. But it looked to have been a wonderful time, and well-attended, and a proper celebration of all of the hard work of those who live in that area, and others who came and helped plant and are helping to look, look after. It's a good example of stewardship with the neighborhood, working in their park, and going through all the permissions, which took a lot longer than the actual making of, of the garden. And, and I thought it was a wonderful example of all of those kind of activities.
And thanks to our city attorney and Hector for showing up as well.
That's right. Particularly Hector, best Simonson, which has darling curly hair and just best smile, so, yeah, it's good. I don't have anything else at the moment, so does somebody want to read us into executive session? Do you want to?
Open, where to go?
I move that pursuant to West Virginia State Code, Section 6-9A-4B12. We move into executive session to discuss potential or pending litigation in matters protected by attorney-client privilege.
Second.
Thank you. On favor?
All right.
Here we go.
Thank you.